We should be going live. Just a reminder, Councilmember Saunders, when it comes time to vote, I'll need to be able to see. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the city council meeting for September 21st, 2020. Just as a reminder and for the record, we're still in a hybrid meeting, which means that pursuant to ordinance 1,000, we have one council member attending live virtually. That's Councilmember Saunders. He is here and hopefully will be able to hear us for the remainder of the meeting. With that, we will go on to invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Vapurzhan, if you could please lead us in that.
Family, Father, we love you. We thank you for the privilege that we've been given to be here, to serve our community, to be a voice. We ask for wisdom this evening on the decisions that are made, the things that are spoken of. We ask for protection and safety for uniformed personnel, for our military. We think of, again, these are such uncertain, unprecedented days. One thing I've been struck with personally in my own life is that everything that I have been frustrated with, whether today or this week or this month, all of my frustrations are temporary. The things that we face are temporary. May we be more focused on the eternal understanding that nothing eternal is going to frustrate us. You said in your word, "That will keep him in perfect peace whose mind has stayed on me." And in the midst of our decisions and trials and difficulties that we face, may we be at peace, our mind has stayed on you. Thank you for those who are here serving. God, I pray that you would bless them, bless their families. We ask for safety and protection from this virus. And, God, we realize that everything that comes our direction, you know about, even through difficulties, we are to be stewards of those. So, God, may we do so as we turn our eyes upon you and the things of this earth grow strangely dim. Pray again that you would give us your wisdom tonight in spirit of God. We're just so thankful for the many blessings that you provided for us in Jesus' wonderful name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next order of business is special guests and announcements. We don't have any special guests and announcements other than everyone here, but nothing on the agenda. We've got the approval of the minutes from the September 8th regular city council meeting. Y'all should have received a copy of those in your packet.
To approve.
I've got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll go on to public comment. I don't have any public comment cards, Madam City Clerk. None. So, we will hop right into the financial statement. Ms. Mathis, the floor is yours.
All right, let's see if we can make all this technology work for us here.
Are you on HDMI or VGA up there?
HDMI. Good deal. Good evening. Looking here this evening at the August 2020 monthly financial report. As we look at our general fund revenues, our county millage taxes trending slightly behind budget year-to-date, about $122,000, and behind prior year around $17,000. We look at our franchise taxes, they're behind budget year-to-date about $18,000, and the prior year just under $3,000. Our state turnback funds are trending just ahead of the budget year-to-date and slightly behind the prior year. Our county sales tax, city sales tax, police and fire department, I'm going to come back to those in just a minute. So, looking down a little further at our parks and recreation fees, they're both behind budget year-to-date about $85,000 and prior year $59,000. We know that's related to COVID-19 closures. However, their expenses are under budget $125,000. So, they're still doing okay when you look at the two combined. And we have the same story there on senior wellness center. They're behind budget year-to-date, $67,000, but their expenses are under budget $119,000. So, they're still trending a little bit ahead when it all comes together. So, I do want to take a quick look at these four lines that we talk about here. Our county sales tax is slightly ahead of budget, about $126,000 more than last year. And our city sales tax is $61,000 ahead of our budget and $226,000 ahead of the prior year. So, I want to take a look at those just kind of over a four-year trend to see how we're doing. And they really truly are up over several years. And this also includes, not the county sales tax, but our city sales tax. When we look at that in a minute, includes that kind of shift there, the credits that we were paying back for some audit work and things like that. So, if we look at that county, it's up about 5.6%. On the city sales tax, and then we'll look at the police and fire, that additional public safety tax, they have exactly the same trend lines. And so, they're up $226,000 so far this year, which is about 15.27%. We're looking at the yellow line here, and what you will see a little bit is that the last couple months are actually a little bit below the prior year. So, year-to-date, we're up. The last few months, not as much. It was from earlier in this year that we saw the increases. So, we'll just keep a close eye on that and continue watching that. But year-to-date, so far, we're up about 15%. And again, that public safety tax has the same thing. This one, we're only looking at '19 and '20. We didn't start this tax until late in '18. So, you're really only looking at those two years, and you can see how we were way above it, and then all of a sudden, those lines start crossing. So, then looking at our police and fire department, I'm going to go back a couple slides here. Looking at that, you can see that our police department is $169,000 ahead of budget and $382,000 over the prior year, and the fire department is $87,000 ahead of budget and $259,000 over the prior year. So, I kind of stopped and said, "Okay. Wow, that's a great surprise, but what's going on?" So, some of this, as we work and try to improve how we're reporting things, how we're recording things, we're going to see some more of those changes we're making, you start to see differences in year-over-year comparisons. So, I kind of wanted to take a little bit of a deeper dive into this, and I just put this together to show you. In 2020, we took that lot fee turnback that we get in July, and we kind of pulled it up and recorded it as a revenue. Well, in 2019, that was actually being credited to an expense line, and it was being credited to an expense line each month when we made the payment kind of throughout the year. So, some of it's a timing difference, and some of it's, we're seeing it up here broken out on its own versus kind of buried down in the expenses. And I'm just looking at the police department right here. The other one we see on the police department is our 911 funds for dispatch services. I'm not sure entirely the reasoning, but those had been in the past recorded as a, like a credit to expense. And again, this year, we've pulled those out and made them a revenue, and then the dispatch expenses are down and the expenses below. That being said, they are also significantly up from the prior year, those 911 fees. So, there's about $132,000 increase so far year-to-date in the lot fee, you know, net when you look at it, which is due to the timing, right? We have recorded $172,000 this year and only $39,000 last year at the same time. That'll start to go down over the next few months. And then that 911 dispatch, it is actually up $93,000 so far this year. So, just kind of wanted to take a little bit of a deeper look at that. And we have the same thing going on with the fire department, just with the lot fee. So, they had credits last year of about $32,000, and this year, they show revenue of $206,000. That'll peter down. That gaffe will close as the year moves on. So, then looking at those general fund expenses, you can see there, the other side of the story, which is again, while we pull it up and look, that shows that the expenses are, in many cases, still under budget. We're still talking about public works. We're still working through, HR and I are working through trying to reclass those personnel expenses between public works and sanitation and streets. The allocations we budgeted just didn't quite get in the system at the start of the year, and we've got to go back and move that all into the correct funds. So, if we look at our street fund revenues, we are still behind budget slightly, about $14,000 and slightly behind the last year. And our state turnback funds are trending slightly ahead of budget and the prior year. The expenses there, they're down to make up for the public work side being up. And then on our sanitation funds, they're about $53,000 behind budget and slightly behind the prior year's receipts, and those expenditures are also showing significantly under budget, some of which is that allocation and some of which I actually believe they're under budget. So, there's just a snapshot at our police and fire fund revenue and expenditures. We've been kind of looking at that now that it's in that little special revenue fund that was established this year. We're budgeted to spend everything that comes in. So, every month, it should continue to have a zero fund balance in 2020. And then I wanted to go on and show you, we probably won't talk about these every month, but I just kind of wanted to show you, we pulled that FEMA grant out, moved it into its own fund. So, the FEMA, you know, we've actually got a reimbursement from FEMA so far of $18,000. That's what you're seeing there. But what we did in that 2020 budget was approve the difference between the grant and the total expense, that match that we have to bring forward. And that was approved in the 2020 budget. So, when we moved this out, we've taken that allocation from the general fund that was budgeted and moved it into this fund. So, as we go into 2021, we don't have to put that match in anymore. We've already basically expensed it on the general fund side and moved it over here so that the money's there. So, right now, you can see there's a $982,000 fund balance. So, our match money is kind of sitting over there waiting on the reimbursable expenses and the money to come in from FEMA. And so, that's where I just kind of showed you the balance sheet there. It'll, as we get reimbursements and have more expenses on this grant, that number will go down until we're finally done, and it'll hit zero. And then we also have that COVID relief grant fund. I didn't put it on the slides, but, you know, it's there in your financial report to show. And one of the things to note on that, we did get that revenue in August, but we didn't book the expense to pay out those EMS payments until September. So, right now, it shows like there's revenue and no expenses to go with it. They'll come the following month. So, just a kind of an update on our department, and I think I pulled the wrong, yep, see, I got the wrong slide. There's that COVID relief fund. There's my updates from the department. Our 2018 audit is underway. The auditors have been here last week and this week. Audit report and that CAFR should be completed, I'm going to say by the end of, by December at the latest. I anticipate that it'll actually be before then, but just kind of giving us time to make sure we wrap all of that up. And of course, we're working on plans for the 2021 budget with the mayor, and we'll have stuff coming to you in...
Soon.
Soon, yeah. I don't remember the calendar dates when that is, but coming soon. Any questions before I wrap up?
Councilmember Vapurzhan?
Just want to say I really, really appreciate what you've done, and it almost, not yet, but almost makes me anticipate the budget meetings because I look forward to the reallocation of the funds that you've done, the transparency that we're all seeing, and the appropriate transfer of everything being right where it should be. So, I'm looking forward, almost looking forward to the budget workshop, but I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. And if you could speak into your mic next time. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I would echo Councilmember Vapurzhan there. You've invoked a lot of confidence. My confidence level has gone up tremendously since you came on board, and I appreciate that. I'm just going to ask on a couple items. The senior services and the parks expenses are down, and what would cause those to go down? Is it we're not hiring temporary employees or what would be the difference?
Well, I'm pretty sure they had several months where there just weren't services going on, and then I think a lot of the services now are really scaled back as well. I don't know. Mayor, do you have more insight into...
I know with parks and rec, when they shut down, they were without rec aids for a decent amount of time. And I don't know if the scale-back at the Center on the Lake was the equivalent. So, I don't know off the top of my head what those...
Okay, that's all right. That's all right.
...forgone purchases are.
Anything that you feel like we ought to be worrying about or concerned about at this point? Are we pretty much on track here for 2020?
Things are looking good. We're pretty much on track. Like I said, we're just watching those trends and that revenue. If it starts, if it continues to decline, you know, we saw that switch where we were way up for the year, and now it's changing places. And so, we're just going to keep watching it from month to month and...
Okay. All right. We'll keep ordering online. Thank you.
Yes.
We are all trying. Is there any additional questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financials. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. A little bit of housekeeping, I've lost connection with Zoom, and last text message I received from Councilmember Saunders said he lost sound at about the time someone went to that podium, which seems to be a repeat of last show or last council meeting. Councilmember Saunders, can you hear us? Okay, that's what I thought. All right. At this point in time, I would entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. And if the minutes could just reflect that Councilmember Saunders is disconnected. That brings us to unfinished business. The first order of business is the third reading of ordinance 991. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Mammell, Plasky County, Arkansas, ordinance number 991, and ordinance of the city of Mammell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for police officer sick leave accruals, adopting provisions for payment of approved sick leave time at best for retirement and for other purposes.
So, y'all are familiar with this ordinance, and it is on third reading. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Vapurzhan?
I just wanted to see if Madam City Attorney would reiterate just portions of the letter we received today. I am watchful, and one of the thoughts I had was this may not be settled until it actually goes, if they chose to take it to a court of law, and I don't know that that would happen, but you have a lot of opinion on this through the letter, and what do you think the court would say in this situation, if you wouldn't mind?
I guess I tried to include in the letter my overall thoughts. If there are specific questions, I'd be happy to...
Well, the case study, several case studies that you had pointed out, if this went to a court of law, it would appear that what we're doing here lines up with that. Is that your opinion?
Well, the letter looked at it through a breach of contract theory.
Yes.
I looked at the cases that it cited, which were distinguishable from our situation because the handbooks were written differently, and they were over issues of termination-at-will, not policy changes in regard to benefits and that kind of thing. I mean, I can never predict with 100% certainty what a court would do, but, you know, the Attorney General's opinion was that the ordinance in its current form is illegal, and so it was never valid. And so, you can't have a contract based on an ordinance that was never legal in the first place.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I need to reapprove ordinance 991.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Councilmember Vapurzhan, were you hitting the button for...
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we've got a motion and second to approve ordinance 991. If there is no further discussion or debate, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzhan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders. Councilmember Saunders' vote will be recorded as noted due to technical difficulty. Councilmember Mosley?
Thank you. Ordinance passes. I wanted to say, just as a reminder, one of the reasons, well, the sole reason we did this was to be in compliance with the law. I have already been in contact with State Representative Lowry about looking at amending that law as a possibility if he were elected in the spring, and he seemed favorable to that. He would want advice, and he said he, of course, wanted to talk to the police officers as well. But I just wanted to pass that on. Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was going to say that as the law changes, these ordinances can be updated as well.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The next order of business is the second reading of ordinance 1,016 regarding catastrophic leave. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Mammell, Plasky County, Arkansas, ordinance number 1016, and ordinance of the city of Mammell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for program and compliance with the Arkansas Uniform Catastrophic Leave Program.
Outstanding. This is on second reading. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a number of questions about this, and I'm not sure if I'm going to be in a spot here where we can get them answered tonight. I spoke with City Attorney Krebs and Ms. Walker extensive, well, we exchanged emails last week about this. I did not realize that the city used to have a catastrophic leave program, and when you look at our current employee handbook, both for uniform and non-uniform officers or employees of the city, it talks about a catastrophic leave program. So, I, City Attorney Krebs has only been here a year and a half, as Ms. Walker's been here less time, and I've been here a short period of time. Do we know when this previous catastrophic leave program that's referenced in the employee handbook is done away with?
I don't know if it was ever done away with. It's just not there. So, I remember asking about it when I came in as city attorney in '15, and I spoke with the then HR director Vernon James, who said something, I don't want to quote him, but the takeaway from that meeting was that it was no longer in place. I don't know why or if it just went defunct or if it was ever removed because of something or if it's still there in the, you know, the atmosphere and no one knows what's going on. That's the best answer I could give to that.
Okay. So, we don't know an end date or were employees notified that it was being done away with? Or that it didn't exist anymore? Or maybe it does exist? I guess what, kind of what I'm getting at is, at the end of the day, this one that's being proposed, I appreciate that it's backed by state law. And so, when I looked at the, I pulled up the state code on this earlier, and this just went into effect back in April of 2019. And so, in the ordinance language that we have, looks like it was pretty much copied verbatim off of what the state law allows. So, I appreciate that fact, that this is going to be backed by that. But another question from the old to the new, if, do we, we don't have any idea what old hours were accrued in there. If we did, could those be transferred over to this new plan? Or does it, does the new plan completely do away with whatever we had before that we don't know about?
Please.
When Sam and I moved here and he became the police chief back in 2000, he brought this catastrophic leave idea with him at the time. I believe Birch Johnson was the mayor, and Sam said it was, there was never an ordinance, it was just a policy that was adopted. He does not know why it just evaporated. He doesn't have an idea, any idea when that happened or why. He kind of felt like that from that period of time between Vernon and Jared, you know, that we were without an HR director, that at that time, he felt like it kind of just went away and nobody paid attention to it anymore. He said that Vernon did keep up with the hours at that time, but he didn't know how many hours were actually in it. So, that's all I have for that. But he did, when we moved here, I remember him putting, as a matter of fact, he was so giddy about it till I actually adopted it in my own company at the time. It sounded like such a great idea.
So, would those, if we knew what the balance was, is that something that we could transfer over or...
If, well, again, if, I'll let the city attorney ask the if we knew question. I can answer the do we know? And I don't know, HR doesn't know, and we haven't found anything that indicates that. I was talking with the city attorney earlier about possibly front-loading this with hours, like whether it was permissible for the council to say, make an initial deposit of time of a certain amount into that bank.
And I, I mean, you read the same statute I read. So, as far as I know, it's neither permitted nor forbidden.
Right.
So, I don't know offhand of any reason the city could not put, you know, 12 weeks or 20 weeks or something like that in it to get it started.
Okay. All right. So, shifting now to the new plan, a couple of questions that I would have on the way this would work. When looking through the employee handbook, one of the things that I noted on, under the previous catastrophic leave, the way they defined this, and kind of what I'm getting at here is how this would pay out and what the limits would be, because one of my concerns was, when does this stop? You know, I don't want, I don't want to see people abuse this when we have employees putting in, you know, their excess hours, which would have gone to nowhere anyway. They're just contributing to it. You know, when do those payments stop? One of the things I've noticed in this, it said, "In no event shall catastrophic leave exceed the earliest period of the elimination period for the city's long-term disability policy." And then it, so I believe that our current LTD policy for our employees, and I think this was just somebody, a comment made at the podium, I'm not sure of this, it's 180 days. It's a six-month waiting period is what I understand. So, the way the previous program was written was that it would end, you know, a person's catastrophic leave payment would end at 180 days. So, I guess that this is more of a procedural, how it's going to be implemented. I don't know if you would want to write that into the ordinance because those can change as disability policies change. But do we have an idea of how this is going to be administered and what those payouts would look like or where they would be kept?
Back when it was actually being implemented, there was a board. Sam was on the board, and I don't know if it, what the board actually consisted of, if it was a council member and the chief or whoever. And they determined when a catastrophic leave request was made, how many hours this these, the recipient would actually receive. So, it was based on that, kind of like a, I guess, a traffic committee almost.
Right. Yeah, it does look like they could go back and, you know, they'd have to have additional doctor statements. But I guess for the new one, though, we're going to have to come up with a new policy, the city would?
So, the way that I understand that it would work, and again, I took it, as you said, almost verbatim from the statute because I just wanted to leave it as simple, and if you guys want to amend it, you can... And if you guys want to amend it, you can, of course, initiate that, is that it's pretty cut and dry. HR administers it. If you qualify and you meet all the criteria, then you receive the leave. If, you know, so if you, say, have cancer or something like that, and you use all of your sick leave within four months, and you have it for another fi, you know, you're ill for another five months, then it would cover that time period. Long-term disability doesn't pay out at full wages. So the way it appears to me, from the way that the statute is written, it would still cover that at least additional amount that you wouldn't be receiving through long-term disability.
Which would leave it as being open-ended.
Exactly, yes, it would.
Well, and then, that's kind of my last question. A lot of time, and I, I haven't looked at the city's disability policy, but a lot of times when you have a disability policy, they sometimes can, and they sometimes might not coordinate benefits with what's being paid out. So if a person is continuing to receive a salary of some sort, that could reduce the disability payment.
That's correct.
So I don't know how that applies to our LTD policy. But those are some questions that I just thought of late in the day, so I think I should probably just email those questions specifically over to Ms. Walker and copy you and maybe get some answers on those. I just, you know, I, I love the idea. I think it's great, but my, the one, my one concern was how this would coordinate with our LTD policy, and is it going to be completely open-ended where we, it could go on forever and ever for an individual, so.
And that's certainly an amendment that can be made. I mean, that's, you know, if we decide that it's practically going to be very difficult to administer once long-term disability kicks in, which you're exactly right, that is how long-term disability policies are written.
Right.
If something else is going to pay, they're not going to pay.
Right.
You know, that's, that's definitely an amendment that can be considered.
Okay.
Thank you. Was there any additional discussion? If not, this will be on third reading at the next council meeting. The next order of business is new business, and the first item is the first reading of ordinance 1015 clarifying actions considered a nuisance. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Flaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1015, an ordinance clarifying the actions to be considered as a nuisance pursuant to Chapter 38 of the Mammell City Code, providing certain exceptions and for other purposes.
Thank you. This ordinance came about following a outdoor concert that we had recently, and there was discussion of a noise ordinance that would clarify things a little bit. Madam City Attorney, was there anything that you wanted to explain in here?
I'll just, I'll just give you the overview of how I got these ideas. I looked at Fayetteville and Bryant's ordinances and just picked and chose some of the ones that I thought I liked best, that different aspects of all three. The chief, police chief Pickard and the mayor and I all met about this to discuss decibel levels and kind of, you know, play with apps to see how loud things were at certain decibels. And so I actually raised the decibel level just a little bit from what some of the other municipalities used, because it really wasn't very loud when, you know, we were just using an app to measure it. Like that, see? That.
That might have been a violation.
But that's, it, it does have sort of a couple of alternate ways to, to measure the noise, both audibility at a certain distance during certain times and hours, as well as the decibel meter in the event that there's not a measurement device for decibels in a particular circumstance, but it's an egregious circumstance, it could still be cited, and we could prove the violation through testimony, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley?
I'd spoken to Ms. Krebs this afternoon briefly, and I wanted to say in front of you all, I could tell that she did a lot of research on this and put a lot of thought into this. It's, it's pretty thorough. I would like to ask, how would this apply to the Mammell Country Club? What would happen if they had another concert much like the one they had before and somebody complained? How, how would this apply to them?
Because I had looked at their zone and all that in preparation, there are certain exceptions for commercial activity in commercial zones. Are there actually walk-in spaces?
They're on what, open space, you say?
They're on open space.
Okay.
So, I mean, we would, of course, just look through all of the exceptions. There are, you know, certain exceptions for certain activities, but I, I'm just right offhand, I'm not thinking of one that would necessarily apply. I know they are doing their best to change the structure of any activity so that if there is noise to be made, it's going to be facing the river. And hopefully that'll make it quieter for all the surrounding residents. But otherwise, it, I, it's just offhand, it appears that it would be enforceable in that circumstance.
Okay. Yeah, mainly ask that, just so if any of those folks are listening in, they'll, they'll have an idea of how it would apply. The other thing I wanted to mention, there was one other thing I had a problem with. I liked everything about it except the, there's, it applies only to, the ordinance applies only to residential, as I understand it, or, or I guess, open space or whatever, but it, it, commercial and industrial is specifically excluded. And my concern is that, that we've got, I've, I've got a constituent that actually lives down the Riverland area that's over the hill, what is that, Riverland Heights? They hear, hear noise from the blowers on the car wash that are across the boulevard there in North Little Rock. And I'd raised this issue with our planning commission when the car wash and the service station were going to be put in there in Country Club of Arkansas, their county's massy and the Country Club. And at the time, there wasn't an ordinance in place. It was hard for the planning commission to decide whether to, how to address that. And I think it finally came down to, they did discuss it, and they finally, I think the engineer representing them had tried to get some information and said, "This is the best I can get." He said, "I just don't think it'll be a problem." And so the planning commission went ahead and approved it. I, I'm worried that when that car wash does come online, it may exceed the decibel limit. And it has an exception here, so there wouldn't be anything we could do about it. And so there's one other example that might come up. There's, there were two commercial, I guess, shopping centers that were approved, that we approved on Country Club Parkway down there by the Country, Country Club of Arkansas Golf Course. And I think one of those had a restaurant, and it might even have an outdoor area. And I could see maybe at some point, if that does go in, they could have a live band out there that could play till midnight. You know, they may have Thursday night band or something like that. And again, that would be, that would be commercial, and so that would be an exception. It wouldn't be anything we could do anything about. So what I, what I would like to do is, is change this just slightly here to where we include commercial along with private residential property as, as having this ordinance apply and not have commercial be an exception. Is that, did I make myself clear there? I talked about a lot of things. So anyway, that's what I would like to do, and I, I'll make a motion, but I'll give the city attorney a chance. I think she might want to say something.
My concern is that, you know, this exception is written in because there has, you know, in the situation where we have a use that's been permitted, and they've gone through the process with the planning commission, and at times they may have to go through a process with the council as well. If the city has approved the use, then we shouldn't punish people for using their property in a way that we've already approved. And I, I don't think there's any way we could do that to businesses that are already in existence and have had those uses going. I mean, there's definitely some issues with takings. If we're going to, you know, one day say, "You can't operate your car wash anymore" when we approved their car wash, you know, through a lengthy process. So that would be my concern. I don't want us to enforce a law against somebody when we've already told them that what they're going to do is permitted.
I, I would, I would answer to that, is that the, the decibel limit was not carefully considered in that, and that this is something, kind of, it would be more of an encompassing thing here in Mammell. It would be almost like any other ordinance that would apply. So I, I guess I don't see a serious problem with, with including them in that. And if so, you know, maybe it should be on a case-by-case basis. If, if we start getting complaints on the car wash and we do a decimal deal and they're exceeding it, it would certainly give us some, some leverage to ask them to put in some type of buffering or something like that. There are neighborhoods that are going to be very close to that car wash. Just on the other side of the ballparks, there's a neighborhood already existing. You've got Salone down the street, and you've got Aerial Circle that backs up very close. I think the, probably that housing addition on the other side of the ballparks may be an eighth of a mile away, and I know on some of these clear nights, noise really travels, so. I would hate to see, hate to see car washes being, the car wash running at 10:30 at night when people are trying to sleep over there, if it does make a lot of noise. So anyway, I'll go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and put forth a motion here to amend this and let everybody weigh in, see what they think. I'd like to go ahead and amend this to, if emanate, it'd be a section 2D, let's include private or commercial property with residential, and then take commercial out of item number six below as an exception. So I'd like to make that motion.
All right. I have a motion to, in section two subsection B, add commercial to the inclusion of residential property, and then in subsection F6, strike the word "commercial" from the phrase "noise emanating from commercial or industrial activity with a valid city permit in a commercial or industrial zone."
Yes, sir.
Are we also going to strike, did you also mean to strike the word "in a, in a commercial" or the second time, where it would just apply in an industrial zone, or?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. I think item six, is that what you're talking about?
I, I think I misstated that. So it'd be in subsection F6, "noise emanating," this is what I understand your motion would be, "noise emanating from industrial activity with a valid city permit in an industrial zone."
Yes. Just have that industrial be the only entity that's, that's exempted. I think everybody, everybody knows that industrial is going to be there, but red, commercial, commercial's still popping up all over Mammell, and it's very close to a lot of times residential.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Interestingly, thank you for the response. I don't want to pick on car washes, but I am reminded of a business, a car wash, that has a radio outside playing where you could hear music, and they'd leave it on 24 hours a day, and you could actually, at night, especially when everything was quiet, you could hear it down the road, and we would constantly get complaints about trying to enforce the noise ordinance after hours. So I guess my question would be, how do we address those sorts of situations where it's not, it's not noise emanating because of the previously approved business function necessarily, but just an excessive noise that, that was loud and occurring 24 hours a day even when that place was in operation?
Yeah, I think there's an argument that that's not really a commercial, that the music running 24/7 isn't necessarily a commercial activity. It's not associated, it's not essential to their business.
Okay. Councilmember Mosley made a motion. Was there a second on that? Going once, going twice, sold, motion fails for lack of a second. Is there any other discussion at this time? Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to have an item I want to clarify. I have a constituent that is probably listening right now, but on two occasions, he has called me and specifically made note and indeed complained about a noise that he was hearing. It was, had to do with a DJ, literally, over at the soccer field, and I drove over and a group of people were doing their own freestyle workouts and exercises. And he said that he can feel and hear the boom and whatever the rhythmic boom of the base speaker systems. One evening I was, afternoon I was sitting on my own front porch across the street, and I literally did not hear it. Part of that may be to my lesser hearing, but nonetheless, all I want to do is just to clarify, and, and this would be the time to let the council know, does any kind of noise over at the soccer field and any kind of arrangement, I believe I was spoken at one time with the Madam City Attorney, and I believe that the resident has also contacted you and the police department about it. So I'm just asking for a clarification. Does the city park and anything of noise of that nature, does it apply in this issue, is my question?
It, it would apply unless it was a city-sponsored event. So there is an exception for city-sponsored athletic or recreational events on public property, because you don't want people to argue that we can't play soccer games on the soccer fields because that's too loud. So, I mean, you know, for activities that are organized, that are sponsored by the city, then it would not apply to those, but it would apply to private activity in the parks.
But apparently, yeah, I, I don't know. Apparently, I believe I had asked, did they actually have a permit? And no one was certain if they did, they didn't know who gave it to them or whatever. So for his, for my response to him, I want to make sure that we brought it up and get some kind of clarification. Is it permissible or is it not permissible? So, I don't know.
I, I don't believe it would be permissible as the ordinance, the new ordinance is written right now.
Okay. Okay, well then, so if we hear it again, then, then we will have an instrument to have it closed down.
Or at least, you know, contact law enforcement and have them come out and discuss it with them.
I appreciate that, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, on the, Councilmember Holt's example there, would that just come under loud and raucous as far as offending reasonable senses?
Well, I think it would probably achieve the decibel level that included that 80 decibels from a distance of no less than 20 feet from the source.
All right. It could be applied either way, though, is that correct?
It's also going to be the easiest way to do it. There's some other provisions that could be in use for it, because it is an amplification device.
You know, they didn't have access to a decibel meter or sound level meter.
I would say I, I will probably make that motion again next meeting, and I'd, I'd ask the council members to think about that. And I'll probably talk to the city attorney again here and see if I can get her more comfortable with my, my ideas. And, but I'm, I'm mainly trying to stand up for, for my folks over there in the Country Club area in, in case, in case there's a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion? If not, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Speaking of next council meetings, we'll move on to mayor's comments, and I hope to be able to have an intergy representative or two or three at the next city council meeting. It's that time of the year where they are, they, they watch the weather very much, and if there's an event that takes their attention, whether it's in Arkansas or other areas that energy serves, they, they've kind of. um, uh, they, they've kind of, a little bit skeptical about making something, uh, scheduled this far out. But I wanted to point out, uh, you know, there, there's been a, a number of recent outages. I think it's important to note that the city doesn't have regulatory or jurisdiction over that. It's Arkansas Public Service Commission. The city's role is that of advocacy, um, and, and arm twisting and, and, and that sort of stuff. Uh, I have been very impressed with our current intergy rep representative. It's a new gentleman, um, who I'll introduce you to, Michael Johnson. He's a Maumell resident. Um, he's been without power multiple times when the outages were there. And he and I were talking as he was out putting boots on the ground. So it's nice to have someone here locally who, um, goes through the same things we do. Uh, and it's been very nice having him to work with, um, regarding the streetlights, which is a, a slowly, uh, but actually evolving situation to get more in the, more of those online. Um, so he hopes to be out here with a couple engineers at the next city council meeting. This statement has taken a long time, but I am proud to say we are finally under contract with the contractor for the Crystal Hill, uh, renovation after years. Uh, I remember sitting out in that audience back in 2012 when the council was voting on that issue to go for, uh, on the ballot. And so we are finally here. Uh, they've given a note, they've been given a notice to proceed of next week, uh, and then they've got 365 days to do it. Please be aware that there are times where that road will not be passable to through traffic. It's not an overlay, they are tearing the road out and rebuilding it. Uh, the maintenance of traffic will, um, uh, allow those people who are there, who live there, to get to and from their homes, uh, and for as much through traffic as possible. But it's a, it's gonna be about a five or six phase construction project. Uh, we are tentatively planning on a groundbreaking on October 1st at 10:00 AM. That is next Thursday. Is the tentative date that I'm trying to, uh, get there. If y'all all of a sudden let me know that that will, that half of you or all of you will not be able to attend, there's still time to change that. Um, but I wanted to point that out.
On what movie?
Uh, on Crystal Hill somewhere. I'll share that. On, on or near that area. Um, yeah, I, I still have to secure a location for that. Um, we were scrambling to get under contract today so that I can come in and say, "Contract." Um, location, make sure I have that. It is next Thursday. Uh, budget meeting dates, proposed budget meeting dates. Y'all should have found a list of proposed budget meeting dates for you guys, uh, and gals. Uh, now's a good time to let me know if anyone is gonna be unable to make these. And you know about it, if we have, if we have enough people not able to make one, we can reschedule. Okay, so happy to hear everything is perfect. I wanted to give a, I had a resident ask me a question about the CAW surcharges and where we were with that. Um, we, Maumell, were facing those surcharges. Y'all may remember when Maumell Water Management dissolved in, into CAW and North of Rock wastewater. CAW put on three different fees. Um, the first of those fees was a short-term fee. We know that is gone at this point. The intermediate surcharge is currently projected to expire in May of 2024. Um, and that's two years, about two years earlier than they originally anticipated. Uh, the long-term surcharge is currently projected to expire in March of 2032. Now, that may seem like an awful long way down the road, but that is approximately 14 years earlier than they originally projected. So it's nice that those are going down. Um, I'm sure everyone will be happy once those are off, but they'll be happy that they're off the bill once that time comes. Finally, uh, it looks like the, we've, we've had some CARES Act funds earmarked for us to be able to respond to COVID. Um, and the amount earmarked was a bit more than I had originally, uh, estimated. That's a good thing. Um, um, but it does mean that, that, I just wanted to let y'all know is we're looking for, um, making sure that we can respond to COVID in the, the most, uh, the best way. Um, so if there's anything that has, uh, jumped out at y'all that you think, oh, it would have been nice if we had X, Y, or Z set up or functioning to be able to respond for this, please don't, please don't hesitate to let me know about that. And that concludes, uh, Mayor's comments. How about Councilmember comments? Ooh, that was about a tie, but if I hit this function button, it'll tell me Mosley, Councilmember Mosley won.
All right, tie goes to the board one maybe, huh? Uh, I, uh, I wanted to bring up something here in front of the council and see what they thought about this. Um, I came down to get my packet today around noon and, and went in, came into City Hall and, and Christie was there. She's always there, very, very capable receptionist. I don't think we could find a better one. Uh, and I noticed from the last meeting, uh, uh, Councilmember Vaporsan was complimenting her on, complimentary of her. But, um, there were people, uh, sitting in the, uh, out there in the waiting area. And then there were also, I looked in and there were people scattered all over the, uh, council chambers here in seats. And I asked her, I said, "What kind of meeting is going on?" Because it looked like, uh, it looked like we were getting ready for a council meeting. There were probably 10 people sitting around in there. And she said, "Oh, that's, uh, DMV, uh, those are the people waiting, uh, we've, we've moved them. Instead of being outside, we've moved them into the council chambers." And she said, "I'm managing that." And, uh, anyway, it, it, I, I, that conversation caused me to call the mayor and ask him what was going on. And it seems that DMV, uh, uh, it didn't used to be that crowded here in Maumell. But from what I'm finding out, that some of the other DMV situations are, they're having to close down their offices and people are coming out here. So we're getting maybe two, three times the traffic we normally would. And, uh, my, my concern is that, uh, this is increasing the, uh, COVID exposure by having more people here. We're not only having people that have business at City Hall coming in and, and being in our facilities and, and here in our council chambers. And the, and the people that come to watch our, our council meetings here, they're all sitting in chairs that have been set in, uh, all day, every business day by, by people that are actually here to visit, uh, the DMV. And so I, I, I'm afraid we're, we're increasing the risk to not only city employees from the COVID and, and Christie, uh, and visitors that come to City Hall. And I, I think something needs to be, be done. Now, this is a temporary situation, uh, in that maybe the COVID is gonna go away and everything will go back to normal. Because I think the mayor did a good job of designing this whole thing without the COVID. But in the meantime, I, I, I came up with a suggestion, and I think the mayor's kind of agreeable, would be to, uh, uh, ask the DMV if they wouldn't do what doctors' offices are doing. They're, they're basically, people will show up for an appointment, they wait in their car, and then they're called in one by one so that there's not people in waiting rooms spreading germs and the COVID and every other thing. So what I would like to do is ask the council to weigh in on this. And perhaps ask the, we can ask the mayor to go to DMV and ask if they can institute such a thing. It would, basically, you could just have the number thing outside. People could come up, get a number, go back, sit in their car. And then somebody from DMV could come out, wave a number or else post it, and that person can come in. And it would keep people out of, uh, City Hall that are va, uh, here to see DMV. Um, and, and reduce exposure for everybody, the way I see it. So, um, I'd like, you know, please tell me what you guys think. I appreciate it, but I, I think, I think that would be at least a short-term fix, uh, to what we got going on here.
Uh, Councilmember Vaporsan, is this in response to Councilmember, you are up?
When I was in last week, uh, Councilmember Mosley, there was one person in there, in the DMV. There was, there was just one receptionist. And so if, if it takes five to 10 minutes per individual, which is an average, you can imagine how long some people are waiting. But I agree 100% with what you're saying, but one individual. Uh, my wife went to the dentist today, we sat in the parking lot, she called, they said, "Come on in." But they have two receptionists and they have all these employees. I, you know, would that fall again on Christie? Because I don't think that the revenue office is gonna pick that up, 'cause they're overwhelmed, there's no doubt about it. Chime in.
So a little bit of background for those that aren't too familiar about, uh, with it. What we were doing originally was the revenue office only allows two individuals, uh, in there, maybe three now, I sometimes see three. Um, and then before we had that furniture out there, we would allow two people in lobby. Um, and then anyone extra was waiting in line. Uh, for a while there, especially, we think there were two local, uh, revenue offices that were closed, uh, for quarantine or cleansing or what have you. And, uh, we were bummed, I mean, it was turning into two, three-hour waits plus. It's not on call, at 4:30, they leave. Um, it doesn't matter if you've been here for two hours waiting, they leave. Um, and it's my understanding that that's just the way their computer system won't let them continue on. Um, uh, I think we're blessed with great, uh, employees that are here in the office, by the way. Um, uh, that said, as soon as, this area was a staging area a lot for construction, they were using this door a fair amount. Once that door was locked, construction got toward the end, we got chairs, we started allowing overflow in here, which we had to go to a ticket system, which is being managed by our receptionist, uh, which is Christie most of the time. Or if she's gone, people in accounting, it is a ma, I mean, you can hire a full-time person to orchestrate this. Uh, there, folks are coming in here, which is better than sweating outside or standing in the rain. Um, but we're already seeing stains on the carpet, and that's with the strict enforcement of no food and drinks. Uh, the council chambers is getting very weathered very quick. Uh, my position has been it's a people's room and so, it, it, yeah. So I'm happy to take that request to the revenue office. I think they'll, well, I have my guesses, I'm happy to take it to them. Uh, Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I'd respond to one of your items there, whether this would be more work for Christie. One thing I'd like to point out is the DMV doesn't have anything to do with the city. They're a state entity, uh, they should be responsible for their own operations and things.
Are they rent-free here?
Yeah, they're rent-free. Uh, and that was an arrangement we did years ago. We, we did that with the DMV and we, we've been under contract with them for years, with them having, uh, basically free rent with the idea that that gives them an incentive to keep a DMV out here for the convenience of our residents. Uh, and, and I think it's worked pretty well. Uh, but at this point here, what's happening is the DMV is, is spreading out. Uh, they're taking up about four times the square footage as their office. And, and they're using one of our people. It, it's a city resource, it's a taxpayer resource, uh, city taxpayers. Uh, and so I, I think they need to, you know, I think we've, I think we've been more than, uh, generous, that's a good word. And, uh, so I, I think they should bring a person in to manage whatever they need to manage and leave Christie to be, uh, our receptionist for the city here, is, is kinda what I would like to see happen, so. Uh, again, it's, it's, city resources are not, we shouldn't be just giving them out to, to other entities. Uh, they, they, if they're gonna use our resources, like if, if a soccer team over in West Little Rock wants to, uh, start a league over here in Maumell, they should have to pay us for some type of expenses or something for that. Uh, we, but anyway, that, those are my thoughts and I appreciate it. Would anybody object to the mayor approaching DMV with that idea?
Councilmember Scott, what are your comments on this issue?
Yes, um, I agree that it's probably not working as well as everyone would like for it to work right now. It is wearing on this, it is using city resources and that kind of thing. The thing that we just need to be very careful of is that we don't lose our revenue office by not being conciliatory during a very serious time. And I think the idea of calling people in their car, texting people in their cars or something like that is a very good one. And hopefully that'll work. But we don't want the DM, or the revenue office to say, you know, "All right, we just won't be there anymore." Because I think our residents would die.
Well, maybe that's something that we need, uh, to purchase, uh, for, uh, COVID, uh, to be able to respond properly to it. Now, if I had, if I had one thing so far to do with, uh, could you make a note of that? Uh, if I had one thing to do over so far, the, the one thing I'd change is the revenue office was not designed to function during a, uh, uh, global health pandemic. The area was small, there was supposed to be some compact seating with plenty of seats in the lobby as overflow as needed. I did do over again, we, I'd rethink that whole, um, arrangement and where they were located. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and go to Councilmember Gardner, who was in a close second to that initial button.
I'm gonna change the subject though, are we, are we, are we good there?
I, it's too, how about this? I don't know if it will or won't, but we'll come back to you then. Madam City Clerk?
I just wanted to share with you guys that I often have to, I can only go downtown to get our public, uh, vehicle tags. And I went downtown, downtown last week. It was nine o'clock in the morning and there were 40 people ahead of me. So I don't know, uh, how well a number system would work, you know, with people going in their cars and texting just because they're experiencing so many, um, employee challenges. And when I went and there were the 40-plus people in front of me, they had a full staff. So that's just something to think about.
Thank you. We, we are constantly getting, um, thanks for what that's worth from, uh, people who have to come to the revenue office to take care of business. And they're happy that they're provided a space in a temperature-controlled room where they can socially distance and spread out and that they have someone trying to manage the, the chaos. Uh, and it is a little bit of chaos. That, that's an interesting idea, those little buzzer things. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how those work in restaurants. I don't know what their loss is there, um, but. I will, I will reach out to the revenue office, uh, and also look at other options. Yeah, it sounds like a great system. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, I will change the subject, but I'll also add, uh, I don't have a lot of confidence in, um, government to create an app quickly to manage traffic flow, so, um, I'll leave that alone. Um, I have a friend that lives in Country Club of Arkansas, and they asked about ongoing construction, um, on Country Club Parkway and the roundabout by Diamond Park Lane. It has torn up the sidewalks and they've got large chunks of rock there. That's pretty much not navigable if you're using a stroller or something to that effect. Does the city have a time limit that a contractor has to be able to complete a project? And repair sidewalks that have been that way for many, many, many months? Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't know.
I'm not aware of a time limit per se. I mean, there are some, uh, code provisions on like not letting sediment get out into the street and cleaning that up appropriately, and they can be issued a citation if they don't do that. I'm not aware, once they have that permit, to be able to commence that construction of, if there's a limit, you know, on the particular permit.
I think it could even be just additional smaller rock brought in, but it's large rock that people can't navigate.
We can take a look at that, and we've had to deal with that a couple times. They tore it up a whole lot and we said, "But you have to, people still have to walk it." Um, uh, I think there is a time limit. I think there is a time limit on building permits, I want to say it's a year, but we can check into that and see if there's something that we can look at. And by we, I mean, Mr. Grummer, did you take notes on that?
Thank you, sir.
That's it, thank you.
Any additional council member comments? Councilmember Vapperson?
Just real quick, had a friend call me this morning, he walks his dog on, on the Country Club of Arkansas and he called this morning, there was some, yesterday someone put some graffiti, vulgar, vulgarity on one of the cart paths and I told him about see, click, fix or call the country club, but sometimes these things can happen and we don't know about it as a group, but if you start seeing large chunks of graffiti or whatever it may be, just to notify each other, say, hey, be on the lookout for this and be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, I believe the police department did take a report on that. Oh, yes, I'm getting up to the minute text messages from the chief of police on that, so. Yes, and encourage people to use see, click, fix. It allows us, it allows not just that department to get it, but for SAF to monitor that and make sure that things are going on. Sometimes we run into hiccups, I, there was someone who recently had a request for mowing some pathways, which usually falls to Public Works. So I signed that request to Public Works, Public Works says, no, we don't do it, we're back and forth, all this stuff between the resident and one of the POAs and then come to find out Parks and Rec was the one who mowed that path area and so it was taken care of. But it's a, it's a work in progress, but it's, it's really helpful. Last call for council member comments. Madam City Attorney?
No comments this time.
Madam City Clerk?
No comment.
All right, with that, take a peek at the FYIs in particular, take a look at that stormwater management plan, that's pretty interesting for some. But with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I've got a motion in second to adjourn, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries, we're adjourned.